Traditional territory of the site is for these nations. It's on their land that we live, work and play state. Prior to each committee of the holy, we do five of the actions that are in the truth reconciliation. And this we highlight is on justice and the justice system as it affects for these people. And their calls just to make sure that they're a little more culturally relevant. And that services to inmates, you know, as they come along. They're all there for people to read. Is there any that anybody wants to highlight or any comments at all on it? See none? Yeah, just as we go through, just to think about. You have an agenda in front of you. Is there any additions or deletions? See none? I'm motion to approve the presented.
Say nothing.
All in favor? Okay, we have two delegations today and first is the housing community engagement. Jeff Cormos, come on up.
Thank you for coming, Jeff.
Thanks for having me. Presentations up there. Thank you, Mayor and Councilors, for giving me the opportunity to present to you today. My name is Jeff Cormos and I'm an advisor in the Healthy Settings Program in Northern Health. For today, these three people from the territory. Committee and Councilors Lozey and Young, I would like to propose community engagement events. Partnership Northern Health, Population and Public Health here in the District of Andrew. The proposed event is complimentary to and a continuation of the great work this council has already done. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm a voice on film.
Can you hear Jeff Ryan?
Yeah, you bet.
Thanks.
Thank you. Over the last few years, the district has invested considerable time and effort into solving housing challenges. Having a comprehensive overview of the current housing situation is a baseline for decision making. It was close to this time. Webinar hosted virtually by the Healthy Settings Team. Over the course of the COVID-19 pandemic, working housing continued, including the action. Provide more in-depth understanding of potential interventions and opportunities. The pandemic and other global or external forces have exacerbated the persistent challenges around housing. In the 2020 official community plan explicitly stated. I'd like to commend the elected officials and members of the community who contributed to this work. As there is a very clear vision of what the District of Andrew will become through planning, collaboration, and some good old fashioned hard work. Slide please. We would like to propose a community engagement event at the Culture Center this September. As a way to contextualize and validate what we already know and bring the community together to share new ideas, concerns, and focus on some tangible next utilizing the housing goals envisioned for Vender. Update open house style engagement is an opportunity for education, networking, and collecting more community input on housing priorities. Okay, to collect community input, feedback. Questions directed at the individual activities and facilitation techniques are tailored to the type of questions. The other half date being with specific groups for a focus group type engagement. Has us to take a little deeper into small groups with more core housing need or industry experience. Asking questions and choose a set of community response or acquire more expertise on the subject. We have four broad goals and objectives bringing the community together for discussion on housing. The first is to understand the different roles played by actors in the housing industry and their level of influence. The health authority and the residents of Vender. The second is to prioritize housing needs in the community over the short, medium, and long term. To understand projects that are underway and to find new ideas and ways to implement them. Third is a networking opportunity for members of the community and actors in the housing industry to better understand each other's roles and concerns and work together to solve a complex challenge. And fourth, this event will help us guide and develop ongoing strategies to alleviate and address ongoing community housing challenges throughout housing. So why an event? Why bring the community together and what benefit will that bring? Effective public participation acknowledges the desire for humans to participate in decisions that affect them. Incorporates communities' values and interests into decision making and encourages meaningful input. Facilitates understanding by identifying a clear and concise definition of the problem and or opportunity. It is a forum for sharing ideas or concerns and helps to develop a comprehensible, comprehensive decision process with explicit decision criteria. And it improves decisions. It brings all perspectives to the table, improves decisions, identifying critical issues early and promotes opportunities to build understanding and balanced reviews of the problem and or opportunity. Slide please. I'd like to take you now through a quick rundown of where the costs are. It is not a detailed budget, but more of a list of where money is and where money can be saved. Facilitation and planning in the event will be at low to no cost as Northern Health will provide training and deliver the event in partnership with the district at no cost to the district. The district is responsible for providing the location, including the event space, tables and chairs, et cetera. The district will also be responsible for the activity materials. This could include things such as markers, pens, paper, sticky notes, and will depend on the facilitation techniques to be decided on during the planning stage. The district will also be responsible for food and beverage, again, to be decided on during the planning stages. Communication channels, social media, newsletters, press releases. In conclusion, gathering the community to engage on housing will help fulfill the objectives of the official community plan and overall vision for Vender. It is an opportunity to bring the community together to collectively solve an important priority. It is a learning and educational opportunity for both the district and all interested and affected residents of Vender. I want to end with a vision statement outlined in the official community plan as it eloquently captures what we are striving for with this proposal. A family-friendly community that embraces the natural environment around us. It's a cultural recreation hub for residents. We appreciate the small-town feel, natural beauty, and opportunities provided for people throughout all their life stages in our district. We are committed to strengthening our community identity, improving accessibility and affordability, providing more opportunities to be active and broadening our economic diversity. I'm not sure it could be stated better. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I would just, I would just like to add, really, it was the community that spawned to this idea. When we first, it was first put out that we had a housing. Lot of interest in the community that was generated. We were looking for some way to allow the community to be involved in this so that they could engage. So that's where the topic first came up and then I had connected. But the desire, the housing committee thought that it was a good idea to get some community. And our meetings have been closed. They have. So I think it would just be a really good opportunity to allow them to come in. And as Jeff stated, they, they would provide facilitators and opportunities, not opportunities, but they would facilitate the discussions. And, and I think it's important for the community to understand how much both council and the housing committee have been doing in the last year. I don't think it's always visible, but we've been learning a lot, I think, as council and certainly on our housing committee. And I think it's really important to share that information with the community. My P.
First, the other point.
Yeah, so we had the meeting in September. What would be the timeline to compile results and then report back or take action?
Answer is as soon as humanly possible. I, I, I think generally we try to give you about no more than four weeks or so on what we learned. Depending on how much is there, how many people participate.
Sure will be different than most years because we're going to an election in the middle of October. Sooner is better, obviously, of course.
Thank you.
Counselor.
I was just going to reiterate in the conclusion there and I think Counselor Lozey touched on it, but you know, the opportunity for people to gather, feel part of the process. There's going to be some learning and that's the biggest piece. There's, there's a few things that, that we found out in the last couple of months that even the contractors and others have been doing this for 30-plus years had not understood. And there's a lot of pieces of that that are at play in terms of for people to understand why the housing process has been a little bit stagnant. It's not one reason or three reasons. There's a multiple. So there's, there's things that people need to understand. And I think having us together, going through some of these pieces and also listening to where people, people are going to come frustrated. That's fine. It's going to be emotional at times. I am expecting. Because, you know, we always say that housing is one of those emotional topics because people's families depend on a safe and secure environment at home. So I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a mixed bag reaction, but it's important to go through that process and to turn along the way with us in terms of, you know, this isn't going to be a fantasy. We're not going to fix this, right? Because we've had this, but it's going to be a piece of the puzzle. And it helps us go forward a little more.
Yeah, and I was, I was just going to add to Counselor Murphy's comment about something, some feedbacks like your report. I think it, I was thinking about that today too. And I think, you know, I think it's important to somehow compile. And perhaps that would come out in the report after the community engagement. All, all of the things that we have been learning in the last year, you know, it's.
Counselor Frankel, did you have a comment?
Just to follow up on Counselor Murphy, I think the sooner the better. I think with, with, with what Minister Eby's talking about, what he would like to do in legislation, the more information that we get quicker, the better off I think our community will be. So early in September would be great.
I just, and it's on the election period too. Is September okay to hold this kind of event?
So through the mayor council, there's no legislative restrictions on public engagement during, during election period. That's speaking solely to the legislative legal requirements and restrictions.
And everything that we're dealing with here, everybody's going to be, there's nothing that's going to benefit one candidate over another. Everything that we're going to find out here is going to be a general interest thing. It doesn't matter what, who's here on council. They're going to want to see the report when it's done.
As council's chief policy advisor and head administration, I can't speak to that.
But I agree with you, your worship. Everyone will want to see it.
Everybody wants to see it.
Yeah, I agree.
Is that this is a new phenomenon, you know, you know, those of you that have been on council for a while. This wasn't an issue 10 years ago. You know, we were building 10, 12 houses every year. It was just going like clockwork and you, and you know, the reports we've gotten in the past. They were all there until all of a sudden, when the new housing criteria came in, we're not there. I think we need to address this. When I, when I see different legislation coming through the province on what is being expected and different landlord requirements in the Landlord and Tenant Act. You know, it's a different market out there. And so we now have to find new innovative ways to work, you know, to find a solution. It addresses the need for rentals, you know, because landlords aren't coming out of the wood anymore wanting rental property, not like in the past. And so we're going to have to learn how to deal with B C housing and be able to get B C housing to invest in our community. You know, second thing is we're going to have to learn how to address, you know, the criteria that is required of home builders today. You know, the licensing and the legislation that requires that is huge. Those are two big things that if we address those, that will bring us back to where we were 10 years ago. Where us a years, quite a number of years, if you look back on, on the regional district report that reports on all communities, we're, we're building more houses than Smithers were, you know, it was something.
The big pieces of that that we've learned about in the past year goes back to lending practices and appraisals too. Those have huge impacts, so much worse so than we thought initially. And I, I think as, as we talk about that, people understand how that's impacted. Right? I, I believe 10 years ago, you didn't see the disparities that you're seeing now. Both lending practices and also the appraisals that we're witnessing now. So a lot of pieces.
Insurance. Those things, insurance and lending practices change when you hit a town under 10,000 people. Am I right?
Yes and no. It depends on the fire department and fire protection services. We're at a disadvantage to larger centers. We don't have a manned fire hall, so that does impact ratings.
And that's basically a 10,000 person. You know, like Prince Rupert has a, has a full plan. You can hear, yeah, lots of interest and, I say, certainly September will be in the middle of, of the election season. So that's going to be your facilitators. They're going to work, work pretty hard to build, control that.
Yeah, yeah, and potentially taking the politicians out of that engagement might, might, not necessarily, but might be the way to control for that a little bit, I think. You know, I'm not a housing expert, but I know when you go to the community for answers, you get the right answers. You get good answers. So bringing the community together to do this will shine some good fortune on those who want to be reelected. In the fact that you're including the community in a major, major decision in the community.
Yep. Please, Jeff. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank you. You know, there has been a lot of work that's been done on housing. I want to thank you two as counselors and for, for your commitment that you've stuck through. So thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right. My name is Jared and I am Jared Holter from Urban Systems. And I'm here to speak today to the capacity of the district's water and sanitary sewer systems. I think this need for review is driven by a development application that came in and need to get a handle on ability to service that. So the last year, we've spent some time looking at the district's water system. Capacity is there and what upgrades may be required or triggered at some point in the future. Well, speak to the water system first and I'll just go over what we've done. Several years ago, Urban Systems has been building a water. A bit outdated. Didn't get use for. We've done, as we've taken that water model, we've updated it with infrastructure changes that have happened. Set it up in a way that it can be used as a tool to easily analyze impacts that developments could have. Aggregated. And when I say calibrated, we haven't gone and done flow and pressure testing to make sure that this thing is as accurate as possible, but it's a useful tool. And I think it can be reasonably relied upon in its current form to just do high-level capacity assessments. Slide please. So how familiar everybody is with the water system, but I thought I'd just show a map and go over the major components of it. It's tough to fit such a large area on a small screen, but I tried to label just the major components here. So this is the whole District of Vender who water system. There are two wells, round order wells that. There's a water treatment pump that shoots that water that comes from the wells. Those wells pump water into the distribution system where the water goes into people's homes and businesses. And at the same time, it provides water into the two storage reservoirs that also supply. There are two pressure zones in the water systems, though each reservoir services a different pressure zone. So there's different pressures that you see in those two pressure zones. And there's also a booster station that provides additional pumping to get water up into the upper reservoir at the top of the hill. The system north of the river has a private system, so it's not operated by the District of Vender. Also, it's a small system under the airport where there's a well and. We didn't, in our review, we haven't looked at the airport at all. It was all limited to the greater system, so through the reservoir. So just to give you a brief, give you some information for context on the amount of water the district actually uses. So over the last five years, 2017 through 2021, rich water used per day was just over 1,300. Based on a population, 500 that works, to 294 liters per person per day. And the maximum amount of water used in a day over those five years was about 3,600 cubic meters. Works out to about 810 liters per person. So these numbers aren't crazy. They're very reasonable. A snapshot on amount of water currently being used by the community. So just a summary of system capacity when it comes to water is generally the system has good capacity. The pressure in the water lines out by the Hillview Motel and for dealership. Lower than we'd like to see is not super low, but it is lower and that's just due to the elevation. And that's the water pressure that can be provided out there, short of doing some significant upgrades. Fire flow available out in the southeast corner of the district is lower than we typically like to see. That just goes, the pressures that are available out there. And the district's water license actually has a limit of 3,000 cubic meters per day, which has been exceeded in the past few years on a couple of years. Sure that gets addressed. I've been at the water system. Yeah, it's, it looks good. That slide please. So I wanted to touch base on ability to accommodate future development. Note that this is super high level. I've got a column here with how many more people could be serviced by the different components, but it's, it's really just to give kind of an order of magnitude. That capacity can depend largely on where that development occurs or where the additional servicing is required, which we definitely look at in more detail, but this is just a high level. Look at the capacity of the various components of the water system. I haven't included pipe in here because that's just completely dependent on where development occurs. But first component here is the drinking water license. And as I mentioned, the daily limit has been exceeded a few times in the past few years. But annual limit still has remaining capacity there. You could service about 600 more people based on that annual limit. If additional capacity is ever required, you just have to go through the process of amending the, the water license or applying for additional water use. Next component would be the wells. And there's quite a bit of capacity left in the yield that the wells can provide. There are two wells, one is larger than the other. Over time, that yield can decrease, so it's good to stay on top of what is the actual water available. As of now, I'd say there's about 4,000 people connect to the system based on the capacity of the larger well. So no shortage in capacity there. The well pumps, that's another component. There's two different well pumps and one again is larger than the other one's capable of about 70 liters per second. The larger well could supply water to about 1,600 more people. While the smaller pump currently can, is too small to even just meet the current maximum data mass. It could be used in emergency situations if the fire pump ever had to be taken on replacement or maintenance. Water treatment plant, it also has capacity for about 300 more people. Its capacity can reduce over time as components wear and the filters. It should see, but as that stuff is maintained. It's in good running condition. The Hunter Lane Booster Station, it's got a fair amount of capacity as well. 700 more service station. And reservoir storage. Storage is very dependent upon how much volume maybe wants to set aside for fire storage. Can't really say for certain whether the district has enough capacity or not in their water system. But based on typical fire flow, storage numbers for a community of this size, there is adequate storage. Now, development for the southern portion of the district, ground is a lot higher. So expanding that way will eventually trigger the requirement for your pressure zone, which would mean a booster station and I'd recommend another reservoir as well. Service that new pressure zone, so it's not solely being serviced from a booster pump. So there's different components here and there you can't, I can't just say, oh, I can have this many more people on the system. Everything has different capacity for, for growth, so it needs to be looked at together and along with where growth is expected and ability to accommodate water servicing to those different locations. I'll speak to the sanitary sewer system. So Urban Systems developed a model for the sanitary sewer back in 2006. And. And what we did over this last year is just update that model with infrastructure changes. We looked at the peak flows the district is currently experiencing and brought those into the model just to see what the capacity of the system is. So again, this is not a calibrated model and for this one, I think steps should be taken to improve the accuracy of the model. It can be used to identify likely deficiencies in the system and to review impacts that development will have, but just with the information that was available to build this model, I think yeah, there's some things that should be done is to improve its accuracy. So the district has applied, I believe, for funding to its sanitary sewer master plan full monitoring throughout the district, just to get a better handle on the actual amount of sewage. So again, here's a map of the sewer system zoomed way out, but major components are the lift stations that have the district. There are about four main lift stations. There's a few others through, but they don't convey near as much flow. But the main stations are Northside, Butte, Recreation and Turner Lift Stations. There is the wastewater treatment plant in which shoots water prior to discharging it to the river. The airport has a force main system and to the southeast portion of the district, there is a low pressure sewer system where each property is fitted with their own pump. Pumps the sewage into a force main that connects to the gravity sewer pipes by the Ford dealership. Just a brief overview of the system looks like. So in summary, the capacity for the sanitary sewer system, there's a few few issues that came up. Butte and Northside lift stations are running near or at or over capacity, just with the accuracy. Close the capacity and that's really lift stations operate. And that's for existing flows. Particularly during ravens or when the river level is high and you know. It's a big difference. There's a collection main that runs down Riley Avenue and crosses the rail and the highway through the co-op parking lot and connects up to the Butte Lift Station. So that main running from Second Street to Stewart Street is reaching capacity. At some point, if development continues in that area of the district, that means it's going to have to be upgraded in order to accommodate additional flows. Inflow and outflow volumes to the wastewater treatment plant require a further investigation. Estimations of flow going into the treatment plant are higher than the flow meter that's monitoring the plant and into the river. So it just to get a handle on why is there a discrepancy and just an inflow and infiltration, just looking through the district. unwanted water in the sewer system. Okay, so to accommodate future development, sanitary sewer system. Station upgrades are already justified for the Butte and the Northside lift stations, just based on the existing flows in the community. So any development in those areas are going to element. Upsize the pipe. Depending on the results of investigating the inflow and the outflow to the wastewater treatment plant. Operate that plant. As I alluded to earlier, inflowing infiltration uses up a fair bit of sanitary sewer capacity right now. So just reducing that could gain a lot of capacity back in the system. And this isn't specific to future development, but important, I just wanted to highlight it. There is a steel pipeline that runs under the river from the Northside Lift Station. So it services the entire portion of the district north of the river and aging. I'm not sure of the condition, but I think it's a good idea just to get a handle on his condition, get a good feel. Where to invest? There's, what I've tried to do here is just highlight some priorities. They aren't necessarily square. Things are very expensive now, so money doesn't go that far, so. allocate that money. But the Butte and Northside Lift Stations, they require capacity upgrades. And that's regardless of future development. The Northside Force Main, I put that on here, not to say spend money to replace it, but spend some money just to investigate it. Make a plan for replacement, know when it's likely going to be required, know how much it's going to cost and know what method might make sense. It can be lined, maybe it has to be replaced completely. Maybe it's got another 40 years left in it. But just the force main, that's, I believe, in the 40 to 50 years. The sanitary main upgrade from Second Street to Stewart Street, that's largely development driven. Currently, I think it's operating near its full capacity. That wishing an inflow and infiltration reduction program, I think that's real important thing to consider doing and just setting aside some money annually to I've actually got a video, which I'll show you after this slide that I got from the district's operators just a couple of weeks ago, just to show into a lift station. Shouldn't be. And yeah, so just informative video. And yeah, keep going with priority water main replacements. No, the district has been tackling that over the last few years. And priority sanitary sewer repairs, there's been inspection work done over the last, I don't know when the last time it was done, but there's been a few, a few years where it was done and repairs identified that were oriented. So just through those, those locations and can sure those are addressed annually, whatever it can be afforded to start picking away at it. People that show that video, you think. Leave us as the Turner Lift Station. And yeah, it's from about two weeks ago. You know, maybe the equivalent of a garden hose running on low. But that's just one location in the whole district and who knows how many other locations that's happening here and it adds up and going in, finding manholes where staff know it's an issue is a great start to just. I have in my presentation, if you don't answer any questions.
So any questions or comments? I've got a few. So this last video here, did they say that was water from the river seeping into there? Is that what he said?
Yeah, that's what he mentioned. Where exactly it came from, it's groundwater coming into the lift station. River levels, groundwater comes up and if there's cracks, holes in the manholes below that. Or if it rains heavy and just surface runoff makes its way into manholes that might be degraded properly.
Sewer. Do you think that the inflow and the outflow, the discrepancy is because of, could be just because of the evaporation? Because that's what lagoons are supposed to do, is supposed to evaporate.
Yeah, there will definitely be a, an amount of evaporation, that quantity, no, I don't think so, but I said there's various things that could be going on, you know. Full capacity. Yours could be out of calibration. There's, there's something.
Our numbers going into the river are pretty exact, I know. I'd not be right because I know our former C O sent us the numbers of, of amount that was going into the river. Not be pretty, pretty, pretty accurate.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Not something I'd say should be meter on that discharge into the river, assuming it's running accurately, then yes, those numbers should be good, but.
Then I have some questions about your water, the high amount of water usage. What month was that a summer month? Was it only one day or was it, if it was high water amounts, was it for a period of days?
You know what? I don't recall. I believe it was but yeah, that was just a single day's water use, but I don't recall the.
Okay, so then you said that our maximum amount of, of water, our license is good for 3,000 cubic meters. Is that a big process getting, getting that, that, is it just a license? It's nothing based on, on science. Is it just a license? Am I right?
Correct. There's a license and they've got the district's an annual limit, just 600,000 cubic meters a year. The district has notified from Contra B C of dates for that number has been exceeded and they'll review and likely just adjust the license appropriately.
So this is my last question. You talked about the two wells, one that's a newer one and what it does, and then the older one. Okay. And you're, you talked about some 1996 data, but the, the old well was relined in 2009, right?
You know, I'm not 100% sure which about that history of each wall. I just, I know that was derated in its capacity in 1966. It used to have but I'm not sure the details on the history of.
Doing these with to check that because we, we did both wells in 2009, drilled the new one. And I'll tell you, the first sleepless night I had on this job was the night we reworked the second. Had lots of different information and you know, there was a guy sitting right in that seat there that, and everything worked the way it was supposed to. But the thing is, is you know, I, it would be just really important that if we're going to make decisions that, yeah, it's on, on because the old well lost a lot of money. It was, the casing was like, it was cheese, you know? And the thing is, is it was just, as well, it wasn't, it wasn't sealed between the cases because it starts out at a at a 12 inch and then goes to a 10 inch, then to an eight inch. But in between those two things, every 200 feet, like it's 600 feet deep, eh? So, so there's, there's three sets of casings, each 200 feet deep. Okay. And the old well didn't, didn't have it sealed in between each of those casings there. The thing is, is nowadays, so I, I guess to me is I just would want to make sure that we're dealing, you know, because, because we did a lot of work, spent a lot of money and yeah. Anyways, good. Brian, do you have any questions? One, go ahead.
Yeah, just the one, I think I'm following your lead here, your worship that, you know, I would think there's more data to be collected. I would have thought we would have known some of that data tonight. But if we don't, then we should. I look at it in a little bit different vein. Jared, you've got where to invest. I'm looking at where to develop. And I think that there should be, maybe that's where our staff can look. Where to invest is, is going to be more long-term, but where do we develop or where can we develop without impacts to the system? Or can we at all? And I mean, those are the questions I think housing committee needs to look at as well. But for the short term, where can we put housing and then, and then go from there. But I think you've asked all of the questions, your mayor, your worship.
Any other questions?
The only one I would have, and maybe this is, this report is to staff, is some costing on, on all of these where to invests to help with that decision making too, right?
Attorney counsel, we're happy to collect that information and this is on our radar. However, just confirmation through resolution would be greatly appreciated.
Any other, I guess to me is, go ahead.
So do you need a resolution tonight? Is that what I just heard? Sorry, Gerald.
Need tonight? No, but just, just to make sure that it's documented, that it's tracked for follow-up purposes and documented as a request from counsel.
And with that, would we rank that as a priority over other things or when do we get, when would we have that discussion? Because housing's number one. So I just need to know where, for myself, where, where would this, would you want that? So you could, you, you know, the, the team shares that, like it's number one priority and we're dropping something else, else off the table. I just see us needing to get this done. I don't see this as something that's going to be done in 2024. So I'm just trying to understand what the resolution is.
Yeah, I agree with what Counselor Frank was going to this because we need to understand the, the whole point of this process was to get some more information to, to understand what we need to do with our infrastructure. So going into this, we already knew that we're, we're in a bad situation in terms of development. So I think tonight would be a great time to, to make that motion because we So I think tonight would be a great time to, to make that motion because we, we need to start fast tracking. I, I believe we're behind the ball on this. That's my personal opinion, but whatever. I, I just think we need to get there as quickly as we can. So if we make that resolution and just continue this process, so we get the, all the answers we need. Because the costing is going to be a big thing for each one of these stages to figure that out and to find ways to get grants if possible. How to spread it out over capital costs. There's a whole bunch of pieces to this, so.
So, so you made the motion that we would.
Oh, I'm not sure if Counselor Frankel already did, but one of us did, I guess. So there we go. Put one of our names on.
For clarification, this information should be presented to during the twenty twenty-three financial planning process.
If possible, and, and I guess to me is, is Counsel Frankel, go ahead.
I just want to, just, sorry, Gerald. What I'm trying to get at, I get that it's a twenty twenty-three thing. If we get information in two months, then we should deal with it in two months. And I don't know, I'm sorry, I just don't know how it works at the municipality and how you get your information, but. If we get it in two months, we should deal with it in two months. So by saying it's in the twenty twenty-three plan. If we get it in two months and we can adjust our five, five-year financial plan in November, we should be adjusting it in November.
Ahead of the game, there's less work to do in the spring and for the, you know, going forward. So to the next, but, or to the twenty twenty-three for sure.
Yeah, no, I just think we should be getting the information as soon as possible and, and moving forward.
I think, I think what I, what I hear from you is. Number one, I guess I'm not probably quite where Counsel Young is. I'm actually quite encouraged because we could have a fifteen percent growth. And as long as it goes back to what Counsel Frankel said in the right area. We, we have water capacity to handle it and, and our sewage seems to be, you know. You know, if we could take care of a couple of lift stations, we could be in, in good shape. So the thing is. Is I'm encouraged, but I think going back to what our C O just asked. Is I think that we need to, this decision needs to be done when? Next year. And if we wait till the twenty twenty-three capital budget period. Where it's too late to start dealing with some of these to order the parts to get the project up and going. Whereas if we get the information now and can find the money. And that's going to be the challenge is, is if we can find the money and then get going because. It's pretty unanimous around here. Housing's the number one issue. The only, housing can't go ahead if we don't have the sewage capacity.
So through the Mayor to Council, just to kind of provide context for the twenty twenty-three date. It's one thing to present a preliminary unit-based price estimate without going through design process. To provide some kind of cost with a percent, percentage contingency allowance. It's an entirely different thing to present a full, a, a ready for tender, ready for construction design with, with either. Quantity, quantity survey or certain quantity survey or estimate pricing or contractor pricing. There are two completely different levels of design that take two completely different levels of effort. The class D preliminary cost estimate is relatively easy to provide, just taking the distances involved, the proposed method of construction type and. Provide, showing what the ballpark is. But the cost to get to a construction price estimate or tender price estimate involves significant engineering design dollars. Which I would propose are, that level of design is better suited for discussion deliberate, deliberation during financial planning. Just given that our financial resources are fully allocated within the twenty twenty-three, or sorry, twenty twenty-two budget as currently scoped.
I think we'd be able to use the process that our C O just pointed out, starting with the, with the initial stage, and then we can prioritize based on that and say, okay. This is an area then we must really flesh out the way forward. So we're not looking at doing everything all at once. But I think that would help us prioritize in terms of, okay, this is what we have to knock out first and then maybe get more detail after that. So bit of a compromise from what I'm saying, what you're saying, right?
You have to do a class D before you get it.
Yep.
With all the survey or engineer things. So the thing is, is. If we can get a class D, get it up and, and going, so we know where we need to focus our priority. We have an idea from this, but we don't know what the cost is. And it goes back to what Counsel Weekly just said. Is that we need, we need to have those rough, rough costs of saying, okay, this is what it's going to be. Is it going to be? A twenty thousand dollar fix, a, a two thousand, or two hundred thousand dollar fix or a two million dollar fix? You know, these, those are each things and if we know what they are, then we know where to focus it. There's no sense doing a whole pile of work in a whole pile of different areas if we can focus it down to one or two things for the twenty twenty-three. Are you all good with the motion there?
The original motion may need an amendment now. That what I have collected was that stat collect costing for the water and sanitary system priorities outlined in the urban systems presentation during the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two committee. The whole and further that this information be prioritized and brought forward as soon as the information comes available.
All right.
That was the initial one. Is there any amendment to that motion?
Put the prioritize in there, brought forward, so and then we can discuss that prioritization process. And we're good. We just agree with that with what staff. She covered.
All favor? Thank you. Thanks for coming and yeah, hopefully, as you say, there's, there's lots there and, and yeah. But I'm actually quite encouraged because. Water system looks a little better than I thought.
The water system does, but yeah.
Well, there's nothing wrong with the sewage lagoon. It's just getting there.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Okay, we're going to be on a bit of a thing, sort of kind of go through this in a pretty focused manner. So yeah, we need to get as much done. Our C O. But you know, if you see me pushing this along, let's, let's just.
So through the Mary Council, I'd actually recommend that unless there's a specific report that council wishes to discuss out of, out of this set of reports. This could, the next seven items could probably be moved as a block for information.
Does anybody want to speak on anything on the Housing Committee meeting?
I was just gonna update just on the, we had quite an important meeting, I think, with appraisals. And so I just had a few highlights there. Just the, the. What particularly stood out for me in that one was how in the appraisal, the energy enhancements to build, new builds are not being captured, which is huge. And I think that the other piece is we found out that appraisals are based on the terms of reference that are outlined by the client. So you could have quite a discrepancy between appraisals based on what the client is asking the appraiser for. So you know, what a bank might want to have or, or might be looking for and you as a homeowner. Would be two very different things. So I think I won't go into it, but I think those are two things that I just wanted to.
Yeah, I just want to chime in on that, that standardization piece we talked about. And again, it was a bit of a surprise everyone in the room to understand that the bank's appraiser and the builders could come. Property that's maybe six hundred thousand, it could be two hundred thousand apart. And again, it goes back to that piece about the, the whole lending practice and, and appraisals. Not really working for us in the north right now. And that was something that, you know, the presenters did talk to us about. It's, we're in a bit of a unique situation here. In the north, not just a venue around that piece. So just, just understanding that there could be that much of a gap. We want to further, you know, bring that up. There's, they're going to be at the U B C M. And we wanted to follow up a little bit more about this, how the practices will continue to work here for us. It was interesting.
Four years of appraisal, three years of U C, so I know it pretty good. Urban land economics, yeah. So anyways, yeah. Good. Okay, then Environment Committee. Any, any comments that you have on it?
Only thing I would add to this, solid fuel rating control by law, we move that, that's going to be on the next meeting and that's going to be solely dedicated to working on that. The air quality letter, I think we were hoping that would go out on. On Facebook with some information. So I haven't seen that yet, but hopefully we can get that, that moving on.
Then Community Services, anything that anybody's got highlighted there? See none, Public Works. So the crack ceiling, is it up and, and going? Do you know?
So through the Mary to Council, I, I haven't received a report from Public Works saying when it's starting, but I, I can provide that information once we receive it.
And then once the Rainbow Crosswalk, it was vandalized once. Has it, has it had any further vandalism that you're aware?
I haven't received any since it was repainted last week, but I'm not aware of any further vandalism.
June accounts payable, any questions? Seeing none. Mean tracker decisions, any questions? None. Okay, Vaniruv Aquatic Center report. No questions? Community Center report. Any questions? And project update. Any questions? Any calls? Nope. Okay. A letter from C K P G. I'll move the recommendation to write a letter. Okay, I would ask a couple of things here. Number one, in their. Letter that they have. I'd like to cross it. He's at first, the second paragraph. Integral party for over sixty years, you know. I'd like to cross it with that whole thing. And where it says S B C's Northern Capital, I think there might be referring to somewhere else. Okay. You good with that?
Good with that.
How about you, Counsel Frankel? Okay.
Did we see a geographic center V C then?
Yeah, we could say that, I guess.
Center of all.
Okay. All in favor? Hey, then. Agreement to go in camera, council holding in camera meeting immediately following the agreement of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-second. Community of the whole meeting that this meeting is closed to the public pursuant to the community charter to discuss. Labor relations and negotiations with other levels of government. And under section ninety-one C and ninety-two B and further than all persons other than mayor, council and pertinent staff. Did I miss something in here? I thought everything went.
I'll move that.
Second, all in favor? Karen, thanks.